This conference will now be recorded.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council meeting of February 6, 2023. Call the order, please.
Mayor Proton Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Councilmember Noah?
Here.
Councilmember Walchuck?
Here.
And Mayor Wollagora?
Here. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one liberty, and every equal liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's see. For the agenda for this evening, please.
Second.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuck?
Yes.
And Mayor Wollagora?
Hi. Thank you. And we have a proposed modification this evening to add under new business, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation grant with the city of Alpena.
Second.
Any other additions before we move on that? Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuck?
Yes.
Mayor Wollagora?
Hi.
And Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes for regular and closed session of January 17, 2023. Any issues or changes? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address to our clerk for her records. And without a public hearing, this is the only time during this evening's meeting that you'll be allowed to address council. Seeing no one in the room, anyone online here? All right, thank you. Okay, the consent agenda. A bills to be allowed in the amount of $216,856.80 and authorize Mayor Wollagora and Clerk Soick to sign. B is approval of a rental agreement with Don's Tractor and Equipment Sales and authorize Clerk Soick to sign. C is approval of a budget amendment request to reduce police revenue by $23,750 and increase police expenditure by $21,250. D is the approval of a budget amendment request to decrease fire and EMS revenue by $128,000 for a federal grant for which the city will not receive. And E is approval of the 2023 permit for fireworks and authorize Mayor Wollagora to sign. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuck?
Yes.
Mayor Wollagora?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Question key.
Thank you. All right, tonight we have a presentation. This is the Culligan Plaza design. We have Aaron Senchuk from landscape designer for Droust. Landscape, Droust. Landscape, please come up, Aaron.
Evening, everyone. My name is Aaron Senchuk. I'm with Droust Landscape in Potoski. I'm a landscape architect by schooling and I've been in the industry for about six years now. I work with a team of two other landscape architects. Between us, we have about 30 years of experience in the design of public and residential spaces. And I actually grew up here in Alpena, so it's nice to have the opportunity to come back and work on a design that is so impactful to the city and a great representation of, you know, everything that Alpena has to offer. We're gonna walk through a series of slides, kind of breaking down sort of the design elements, material selections, and just the incorporation of some of the responses we got from the public survey that went out a few months ago. So here we have a plan view, a representation of the plaza. We have second Ave here and Chisholm is running sort of north to south on this edge of your screen. This here is the Nicolet Bank structure and the parking lot. And there is the, the old Royal Knights Cinema. I'm not sure what the name of the new structure is. I think it's Sanctuary, but that is located on this side for your orientation purposes. Within the design, you know, we had a lot of requests for entertainment and green space. And the primary goal was really activation of the space for a variety of recreation and entertainment purposes. To that effect, we, we tried to preserve a large areas sort of of open hardscape, mainly concrete due to the, the inherent connection that it has with Alpena and Alpena Community College being one of the largest concrete producers and just concrete specialists around. So we really wanted to reinforce that with keeping the concrete present throughout the design in both a standard concrete detail as well as this brown is representative of what will be a stamped concrete that helps to tie in with both the Heritage River Walk as well as there's the Culligan Street Park right up the way here that has a stamped concrete pattern. So just keeping, you know, that concrete relevant and tying the design in with areas that are present throughout the remainder of the city, really providing a unification of space as you're moving throughout these walkable areas downtown. In this central area, we have done an elevated stage. There is a three steps at a six inch riser. So it's an 18 inch elevation on that stage, giving us an area for music venues, small performance opportunities. And we've maintained ADA accessibility through the use of a small ramp feature here. With, at 18 inches, that ramp needs to be approximately 30 feet long and we can, we can keep a handrail condition there, handrail free condition there, excuse me. So we're really keeping that area open and visible as you're, you know, walking either from the downtown or as you're traveling down Chisholm here. That location would sort of serve as the location for the Christmas tree in the wintertime. So we have enough space here to locate that Christmas tree and really kind of elevate it up, giving it a place of prominence within the design. So it's very visible as you're moving into the space. We've done sort of a radial design on the concrete through this section to kind of reinforce that central location and sort of provide a level of flow that moves you to this structure here, which we've removed the wall that's currently present, allowing free flowing traffic to and from this parking lot, really increasing the safety as you're able to now exit the parking lot from anywhere versus being funneled through the current entrance located here. The, the columns, as we'll get into, are another typical construction that you'll find throughout the city. One known example is that SciTech Park. They have, the columns on the pavilions are done with the same construction of sort of a rough faced sandstone block. So again, with the repetitive element, unifying the space to other areas within the city. A lot of the materials that we're planning on using will be, again, in an attempt to reinforce that connection with our history, limestone quarried from the local quarries in the area, calcite, lefarge, et cetera, will be used in the banding of the pavement here as well as along this water feature to kind of build up sort of the upper section and give us the elevation required to create a nice volume of water noise as it's transitioning through this water feature that sort of becomes the main element of the space and allowing opportunities for relaxation and in general enjoyment of the area as you're, you know, eating lunch or, you know, commuting through the space. The site furniture is all going to be movable, so it provides a very high level of flexibility when doing events or if art on the bay, you know, they need a few more spots. They have the opportunity to kind of move this stuff out of the way and set up some additional tent structures sort of in these areas and, and really kind of blow up the, the venue to, to provide some more space for vendors, et cetera. We've used backless benches, giving you the opportunity to focus your attention either towards the stage or turn your back on that and sort of be at peace with yourself, close to the, the natural water feature here. So moving on, we've got sort of an isometric view of the space, giving you a better perspective on how all of that kind of lays out with the ramp structure coming up from, you know, this sort of parking lot area and this continuous step allowing easy access to and from the stage as well as providing a large amount of inflexible seating opportunity for enjoying lunch in the sun or just kind of hanging out with your friends. The water feature here is, the goal is to have that. So it's actually accessible for the most part to kids and adults alike, able to sort of take their shoes off and, and maybe dip their toes in the water. The design depth, we're shooting for a four to six inch design depth, so it's safe for kids to be in and around without the potential for, you know, a tragedy to happen. The plant materials that we've selected for this are going to be a lot of native selections that provide texture and, and color and softness to all of the, you know, hard elements that we have. As it's a plaza, we, we wanted to really maintain a lot of that flexible, open hard space, but really balance it with a strong canopy and a vigorous understory that provides a lot of texture and seasonality as you move from spring into fall and even into winter. So as you're approaching from the parking lot, our, our goal is to realign the central entrance of the plaza with, this is an existing sort of parking island that's in that, the parking lot there. So the goal would be to, to update this so it's more functional for people to exit their cars, get immediately onto the sidewalk and transition down into the plaza via more, a more formal sort of gateway here. I've already mentioned the columns, this sort of cross section here. In the previous iteration that was released about a year ago, it was mentioned that we could utilize, you know, local lumber and, and timber. Again, getting back at some of those connections with our industry and our heritage. And that can still be implemented here with this cross section being a large white pine, you know, timber and, and maybe a metal sign that, that hearkens back to the industry of, of Alpena as a whole. This view is looking sort of up Chisholm, back towards the, the movie theater here in the background. I think the Black Sheep is down there. So this kind of shows you how that ramp structure would work. This area here kind of opens up a little bit with the shape of that parking lot to provide some exit, uh, opportunity for bike racks as well as maybe some garbage cans, et cetera, back there. And then we've kept some of the standard tree gate detailing that is evident throughout the city, but just kind of cleaned it up and integrated it with the, those stamped concretes and existing concretes. Moving into the interior here of the plaza, we're kind of looking towards Nicolet Bank there. We want to update the signage to be consistent with the new signage that's been kind of being implemented in various locations throughout the city as it's come along. I know this one that we have shown here in the rendering is an existing structure that we'll likely preserve, but there's some of the new wayfinding throughout the city would be incorporated along the area, giving direction and, and showing people where to go. This paving band here sort of functions to, to direct traffic and, and allow the flow through the central corridor of the space. And then we wanted to use, again, the large canopy to provide some areas for shade as you're enjoying the, the passive space along the backside of this water feature. Here's just another view of that plaza, looking back towards the waterfront. The columns kind of anchor the space and really serve to give you a sense of enclosure and make you feel like you are somewhere when you're in the space while not being as, as a sort of blockaded in there as the wall is currently forcing you to, you know, enter through a specific location. We've, we've sort of pulled these inwards a little bit, so there's still an avenue of traffic along the backside of here. Again, just safety in mind, getting people out of that parking lot and giving them the ability to move through the space as they choose. Here we're looking in towards the intersection and this just really a sense of scale with, you know, we can have a lot of people in there and, and the space feels really nice as you're walking along. The water feature is easily accessible. We've got kind of steps almost that lead you down and allow you to, to get in there and access that versus the current situation where it's the sunken plaza and there's no ADA access. So we're really cutting off a portion of the population, not allowing them to, to enjoy the space as it should be enjoyed. Here we're looking down second Ave, you know, just showcasing some of the, we'll get into this more, but the low lighting elements and sort of the texture that we'll be attempting to incorporate through that plant material as well as sort of giving a better image of how this sort of water feature lays up. There'll be a series of small falls. It's about a two foot elevation change, giving us the opportunity to create a series of small falls throughout the stream corridor, really giving us the ability to maintain a, a good level of water volume throughout the entirety of the plaza space, not just localized in one particular section. This shot here is kind of looking back towards the stage from the other side of the water feature in what I would call the more passive recreation space, kind of the area for just hanging out and, and hanging, relaxing with your friends or enjoying lunch during a business day. A lot of this new site furnishings that we'll be incorporating will all be movable, like I think I've mentioned before. I've, I've showed some square cables in the renderings, but as I was driving over here, you know, I thought it was probably a better idea to have some square cables so we could pull them together and, you know, have the opportunity for some large gatherings, just really informal and flexible space that, you know, there's no really restrictions on, you know, you have to sit here. If the sun's shining and the shade's over there, we can take the table and move it to the shade versus being pigeonholed into, you know, suffering in the sun if that other table's full. In this rendering, we, we've implemented a fire feature. It's, it's tough to see here during the daytime, but we've got some nighttime shots coming up that will showcase that a little bit better. That a large number of responses indicated that they would like to see a fire element incorporated in the design. And so we wanted to accommodate that. The fire element that we've selected and shown here is about six feet long, comfortably fits about eight to 10 people, you know, with a reasonable sort of personal space, but obviously you can pack a, a good number of folks around that area if so desired. All right. And now we get into the, what really I think sets this plaza apart from the previous design is, is going to be the lighting and sort of the ability to, to really allow the space to be usable anytime, whether it's day, night, or winter, you know. The, the soft lighting that we'll be incorporating, you know, along the water feature and in the steps provides increased safety, visibility, and usability at any time, which, and, and also just the impact of, as you're driving by on second Ave here, you know this is a place of importance because of the consistent and even lighting and with the columns sort of uplighted to showcase, like, wow, this is a really special place and it's the heart of the city. I encourage you to drive by the plaza tonight after you leave and take a look at it and, and just think about this image as, as you do it and how that could look. And here we've got sort of, again, with that fire element that I was talking about, a little bit more visible with, with the flames showing. So really just a, a nice place to gather on a cold summer evening or a nice winter evening when the snow's falling. And I've sort of researched a lot of the code and everything. These will be a timer element. We just, you could turn the timer and they turn on and, and it turns off. Nothing to it, anybody can use them and they're great. So Charlie will just kind of scroll through a few other pictures here of the nighttime renderings. And, you know, it's more of the same, just really trying to showcase those elements that we are bringing into the design, like the stage with, with lighting. So that we're going to really light up the stage, the water feature and those columns and sort of keep a nice soft, even light throughout the space. So it's just going to be a really friendly and functional space, day, night, winter, summer, fall, you name it. Yeah, you can just cruise through these ones, Charlie, and I, I think we've got the idea. I accidentally left the Christmas tree in this one. There's Christmas time. So that's kind of my spiel for Culligan Plaza. I hope that everyone, you know, thank you all for coming out. I appreciate it and I, I hope that we've incorporated, you know, elements that, that satisfy everyone's desires and, and got a lot of that comments from the public survey into that design. So thank you for coming out, everyone.
If you want to stay, stay put just for a second in case we have questions for you, but maybe not. This was obviously, well, this is my first glance at this. I don't know of anybody else other than maybe Cindy, because you've seen this before. So this has gone through the word group. I had a couple of questions, maybe, maybe Cindy could answer as well. So one of them was, was kind of, I think, kind of answered. So there's a two foot elevation between the beginning of the water feature to the end. So the water is going to be moving?
Yes, sir.
And sliding through there?
Yep.
Okay, but not necessarily a fountain like we have now, nothing that put, it's just, it's flowing, which is?
And, no, it's all conceptual right now, so we have the ability to incorporate a fountain if that were desired. But I think, like I had mentioned, we're going to achieve sort of the idea of the fountain through the generation of the, the water noise. I'm not sure if that's the correct term.
Sure.
But with that change in elevation, then the series of falls, again, we, we have to raise, you'll see in some of the renderings, this end is sort of raised up on the plaza, up out of the plaza here by about 18 inches to allow, give us the ability to, to lower that grade and then without creating a huge hole in the plaza at the other end, that's a, a tripping hazard and, and something that could be dangerous for youngins.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to be, just out of clarity. And then the, there was, one of the highlights I liked from the original was the, was the sculpture. Has that been discussed at all to, to implement into this design or, or is that kind of?
So we, we were, the plan, if I may, the plan was to, you know, get this kind of laid out conceptually and then we'll find a place for, for the sculpture.
Okay.
Somewhere in here. And we might even play around with that a little bit with the different elements, but?
Okay.
It's definitely a consideration.
I know in my previous, one of my previous presentations, I think it was a three piece sculpture, and I had kind of thrown around with the idea of, you know, locating one piece of it in this park and scattering the other two to create sort of, you know, a sculptural trail element that can be built upon in the future. So again, with the linkages of the downtown by having, you know, similar elements in different locations that people can then, you know, have a roadmap of, you know, cool places to visit landmarks within the downtown that are worth visiting that, you know, maybe you have a few more envisioned and, and located at various places to create sort of a sculptural walk that leads people through the, the greater downtown area.
Okay, awesome. Well, I loved your presentation, Aaron. I thought it was great. It looks to me like you've incorporated everything, most of the things from the surface.
We did our best, I mean.
No clowns, so. But yeah, I, I don't have any other questions. You answered everything else. It kind of had going as I wish. I don't know if any?
I do have one about the larger, I'm not sure, that's not a body of water in the circle anymore. That's gone instead, in lieu of that, is the, the gradation of the water, right?
Yes, so if you, could you go to the plan view, Charlie, top down, the first one? Yeah, so this will be what I guess I would coin the headwaters. And the water direction will be sort of flowing towards the downtown, also towards what would be the Thunder Bay River over here somewhere. So it's, it's kind of almost a tributary that's, that's leading into the Thunder Bay was sort of the thought process behind that, if you wanted to really delve into it. But yes, we'll, we'll have water volume and we'll be able to create, like you can see here, there's kind of a spillway. And then we'll have areas of access where you can, you know, step down into the water feature at certain points. And one thing I forgot to mention is we'll, we'll also have, the end goal is to have some sections where you can actually just cross. So the river isn't really becoming a barrier whatsoever. Obviously, that's not an ADA accessible route, but most folks would be able to traverse that very relatively easily, removing, you know, sort of that barrier. So if you wanted to just kind of make sort of this direction of travel, that would be something that could happen.
Very cool.
Yeah.
No questions? Danny?
I think that most of my questions be answered when we go to actually look at it. Like I was thinking about the electrical or recharging stations kind of thing like this. Now, when you're sitting there and eating, eating, I assume that those would probably be part, are integrated in the low level light things like this, so.
Yeah, because that was, that was kind of a big deal with.
I mean, that's something that is, I figured is part of. Hard to show on the conceptual renderings, you know, we can, once we get into construction drawings, those, those utility vaults and, and stubs can be located for USB charging stations, you know, whatever we wanted to include in the final design. I had thrown out the idea of making it the whole plaza Wi-Fi compatible. It could be something cool, but it's really up to, you know, that, what the final decision is when we get to construction document drawings and? I just figured that was part of the construction phase. Tales will be answered a little bit further on down the line. So kind of a 10,000 foot sort of graphic representation here before we delve into the nitty gritty.
Right. Yeah, good. And good, good question, because that way we know that it's still on the table and this isn't, this isn't the final and done deal, so. Yeah, it's awesome. Awesome. Really appreciate it. You sure off the hook then?
I appreciate you having me.
Totally.
It's been a pleasure to have the opportunity to work on it. Like I said, I, I grew up, you know, out on Long Rapids Road and I saw the design on my Facebook back in December, whenever it kind of the uproar happened. So, you know, I had my own thoughts on the subject, kind of in line with most other folks. And I was really happy to see it land on my desk and have the opportunity to be involved. So thanks again, everyone.
Excellent. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
And you need more action from us. This was just a presentation.
We really just wanted a consensus or even a motion to continue to move forward with this. You know, of course, we have budget to consider and where we'll end up with that. I don't, there may be some additional fundraising that's needed, but, you know, all in all, it was, it's a great design. I thank the community for giving all their feedback. It's really made it a, a better design, better project. So hopefully we can move forward with this with your blessing.
Okay. So yeah, just a motion to proceed?
Some mood.
That sounded good, is that good? Shortest motion ever.
Ever.
Councilmember Walchuck?
Yes.
Mayor Wollagora?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
And Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Question key.
Thank you. No announcements in procs. Next we have report of officers and the first is the Grant Support Services. And Rachel Smolinski, City Manager, is going to introduce that.
Hello, everyone. Okay. So city staff produces an amazing number of grants, given the time and resources that they currently have. So that's perhaps one of the, the biggest requests that I get from staff is, you know, help writing grants. And of course, everything that we do needs funding. So for the past, the last fiscal year, '22 to '23, council had set aside $50,000 that's already budgeted for grant writing support. And so as I was exploring some different options with this, I thought it would be a contractual agreement anyway, because you can't really fund a staff person for $50,000. And this is something that we really want to grow into. So had some discussions with Target Alpena, given our existing agreement with them for economic development. And discussions with Mike Muller, who is on, online if there are any questions. We came up with, with a scope and thought it would be easy. We came up with a scope and thought it would be easy to incorporate into the Target agreement that already exists. And again, won't read the whole thing, but since we're into, well into the fiscal year, whenever we could start this based upon when they could bring staff on, then we would pay for these services at $961.54 per week, which is just prorating that for the time that we have left in the fiscal year. So it's my recommendation as city manager to approve an amended contract for the Grant Support Services with Target Alpina. I have a recommended motion there and I also included in the packet your current, our current services agreement. And just to note that there is a provision in section seven where it can be amended by the mutual written consent of both parties.
So if I, and I think I understand this properly and Mike is on the line, so this, this person would be vetted and hired by Target, Target?
Target Alpina.
Currently Mike Muller.
Correct.
With, but, but the vast majority of what they're expected to do is, other than, other than the administrative and grant writing support for the Alpina Housing Task Force, pretty much everything else that they're expected to do will be grant writing for the city of Alpina.
For the city, yes. And then I know, Mike, I don't know if you wanted to speak to, you know, other things that would be included in that job description?
Yeah, so we really have built a kind of a four-legged stool here for this, for this person here, Grant. The Grant Support being the primary, I guess the strongest, sturdiest leg on the stool. But then there'd be the Housing Task Force kind of coordination because that would take a burden off of Rachel and many of us frankly, so we think that would be a good fit. And then depending on the candidate, we've got a couple of other things. One of the, one of the things I could do is support existing businesses and there are a lot of grants that don't necessarily fall into the city that our local companies would benefit from potentially. So I would want this person who's got a grant focus to connect those grant opportunities with existing companies in our area. Whether they're chamber members or not, doesn't really matter to me. If there's a grant out there to help a veteran start a business, I would like for this person to be able to connect the veteran to the grant opportunity, not to write it for them, but simply to make them aware of it. It may be coach them if time permits. And then also work on helping existing businesses through the MEDC. They have a retention program to kind of help existing companies and coordinate that effort. So bringing the local businesses together with the MEDC staff, you know, one day a month and to talk about pain points within the business that the MEDC may have tools and support or contacts to help, help that company. So those are things that I simply don't have enough time to do, that I think are low-hanging fruit that need to be done. So this person, again, has time permits, would also work on that element as well. So those are kind of the main pieces that we see, but we know a lot of the work is really going to be on the grant side primarily. I'm going to say maybe 70% of it's going to be grant-related and a lot of that will be in direct support of the city.
Right, and so just to note, this $50,000 would be just for our services. Of course, this individual would be supported by other organizations through Target to do the other portion of their work.
Okay. Because I really honestly don't have a grasp on what annual salary for a grant writer is, so apparently it's more.
It would be more than $50,000, yeah. Plus benefits and such, you know, there's, there's more to it.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's all the questions I have. I mean, obviously I have a couple of comments if this is passed and this is kind of a first time thing. I'm sure you're already aware that to somehow, somehow gauge, somehow be able to gauge and benchmark whether this was, you know, when we meet again a year from now or less, whether that, you know, whether this really paid off and have something, something written, not, not necessarily, yeah, that worked out pretty good. Just something that maybe even highlights, you guys are already doing that, you guys already kind of, our staff highlights, you know, how much grant money we've brought in, in that fiscal year or something like that. So just kind of to keep track of something like that. So a year from now, we have a really good written grasp as to whether that was worth taxpayers' money or thousands of dollars.
I can certainly sit down with Target and come up with some benchmarks on this so we can report back in a year. The intent would be, so since we're starting the new fiscal year in July, the intent, if approved by council, would be to amend this, you know, put this into an entirely new Target agreement. We might have a little idea of how it's going then, but that's not really enough time. So within, you know, the next 15, 16 months, we should have a lot better idea. But sometimes these positions take a couple of years to, you know, be fruitful and have your return on investment. But I think in this case, you know, city staff has even shown with the limited amount of time that they can bring in a lot of, of funding in this manner. So I think this is, I believe it's going to pay off, but we'll certainly set some benchmarks.
Okay, awesome. I don't know if anybody else has got any.
Kind of what I was pointing to as well. I mean, it sounds like $50,000 a year, we're spending a lot of money. But I know you, council certainly used the term opportunity cost in the past where I'm always concerned about what we're not getting because we don't have someone dedicated doing this. There is a lot of opportunities out there for different grants and when we've got someone working on this part-time, I think we are missing out on certain opportunities. So I agree with what the mayor said in benchmarking it so we can at least have a report to kind of give us an idea of what we're getting or in our return on investment.
Sure.
I honestly, I don't write grants, but I have a friend who does and I am just amazed at the amount of time a single grant can take. And so I think that this is actually, you know, a good move for us, at least give it a year or two and just see exactly what we can get back out of it.
Great. I don't disagree.
Agreed. And Bill, you've had an opportunity to read over the.
Yeah, 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 I am probably.
Okay. All right.
Ready for motion, sir?
Yeah, sure, please.
I move we amend fiscal year '22-'23 service agreement with Target Alpina for additional service at the above rate of $961.54 for grant writing per week on a date agreed upon and further approved that the mayor and city clerk sign on our behalf.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
And Councilmember Walchuck?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mike.
Thank you all very much, appreciate your support.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, next is the first reading of ordinance number 23-485, which amends Article Three Retirement Systems, Section 62-73B5.
This is an ordinance of the city of Alpina, Michigan, amending Article Three Retirement Systems, Section 62.73E5. Section 62-73B5 shall be amended as follows. Five, any person not already a member of the city retirement system defined benefit plan, appointed to the role of fire chief, deputy fire chief, police chief, or deputy police chief on or after October 4th of 2010, is excluded from the city of Alpina Retirement System Defined Benefit Plan. Such individuals are eligible for and shall receive the city of Alpina Defined Contribution Plan. They're also eligible to participate in the social security system and all other retirement plans available for any administrative employees as allowed by federal and state law. The provisions of this ordinance shall take effect 10 days after being adopted by the municipal council and duly published. Just briefly, this went to the retirement board at the last meeting, the retirement board signed off on this, but it has to be approved by council. I don't know if any of you, I guess I don't remember how long you've been mayor, mayor.
Sounds like just a couple of days.
Yeah. In any event, starting back in the mid, the middle of the 2000s, so 2005, '06, '07, somewhere in there, you started amending the union groups to take employees out of the defined benefit plan. And as you know, the fire chief and deputy chief and then police chief and deputy police chief are all administrative employees. And so there was probably a little bit of lack of foresight as it related to this when it was amended back in 2010. The intent was any new person that went into that position would no longer be in a defined benefit plan. And it was not a forward enough thinking to think, well, what happens when somebody is already a member of the system and goes into that role? Which has occurred with our newly appointed police chief and our newly appointed fire chief. So it created a little bit of, what do we do with these folks when this just recently happened? So went back and realized we had to amend this to, to have that applied to somebody that's not already a member. So that bold language is the only language that's changed from the previous ordinance.
Okay. January 2012, by the way. That's when I started, so this was before my time. I wasn't part of the oversight. I guarantee it would have.
I don't even remember who wrote that back in 2010.
All right, so first reading, so we'll expect that to come back at our next meeting in February?
Yes, please.
In a couple of weeks?
Unless there's any suggested changes or any.
Anybody have any questions or issues with it? All right, next up is a first reading. Oh, this is the first reading, that was just a discussion last time, sorry. First reading of ordinance number 23-486, which amends Chapter 86 Taxation, Article Five Bingham School Tax Exemption by amending section 86 through 99 duration.
This is ordinance number 23-486. I won't repeat what the mayor just repeated, but this came in front of you a few weeks ago. This is the Bingham School property, this, at least they're making attempts to turn that into senior housing. They weren't able to accomplish that, or at least weren't able to accomplish, starting the project before January 31st of 2023, which is what the current ordinance says. So this simply amends the date, it doesn't do anything else, but extend that time until June 30th of 2023. If I recall, a member of the Hope Network appeared on their behalf and said they're pretty confident that they can get it started by then, but they couldn't get it started by January 31st. So it's just an amendment to change the date and the provisions of this ordinance shall take effect 10 days after publication.
Okay, and also being a first reading, expect that to come back at our next meeting as well. Any questions or issues with that? All right, thanks, Bill. All right, next up we have unfinished business, so this is marijuana ordinance number 23-484. This will be a work session, which basically means it'll just be a little bit more, more interaction here this evening. And Montiel Birmingham, our planning development and zoning director, you expect to kind of kick that off and blow us through, please.
Okay, so as a result of our last council meeting on this topic, we were asked many different questions and were asked to go back and do some research, including getting with the Planning Commission and having a meeting with them. So that discussion took place on January 10th with the Planning Commission. We also had a discussion with Bill Pfeifer on some of the ordinance updates based on your feedback. Certainly there could be more based on our discussion today, but we have started that conversation of amending those on your initial feedback. So some of the topics that we are going to focus on today are curbside drive-through service, micro businesses growers and processors, reflection from residential, and map considerations. So I thought I would go through each topic and then give you an opportunity to comment on our findings as we go along. So the first one being curbside drive-through service. So we talked about allowing that and that you were in favor of allowing curbside service specifically. I did go back and talk with Planning Commission about that. They were also in favor of allowing curbside service. I also called other retail locations, primarily within Northeast Michigan, to ask them what their process is. All retailers surveyed allow this as well. There was only one that did not allow it, which was in Gaylord. And all of them accept cash, some of them only accept cash. That was a question that came up. None of them experienced any issues with curbside pickup at this point. State of Michigan curbside requirements was another question, so what did they allow? So in the state law, it's referred to as contactless and limited contact transactions. So number one is evidence of compliance. Oh, and they also refer to it as, so contactless and limited contact transactions for the state of Michigan, they say which includes A, curbside and B, drive-through window service. So they put them both together. So evidence of compliance from the state of Michigan, they may designate an area unless prohibited by an ordinance adopted by the municipality. The designated area identified, must be identified on the business location plan. So that would basically be the site plan that they submit to the state of Michigan. They have to have a contactless or limited contact operating, standard operating procedure. The transactions must be during normal business hours. They must have an ant, have in place an anti-theft policy procedure and automatic capability. And there are some other ordinance requirements that they have that refer to other portions within the state law. And that marijuana must be in an opaque bag and contents must not be visible to the public. That's the case for anyone coming in and out of the building as well. There was also questions about site, site plan approval. Feedback from the Planning Commission was that curbside service is a faster transaction than going inside and actually looking around. So they didn't necessarily see a major impact with allowing curbside from that standpoint and felt that really we just ultimately need to meet the total parking space requirement to accommodate that traffic. And let's see what else here. Oh, and then drive-through service. Again, Planning Commission's opinion on drive-through specifically was to let the zoning ordinance requirements dictate if drive-through service is allowed based on the unique features of each individual location. And that's really it from a curbside drive-through service unless anyone has any other questions or comments.
My only question, I guess, is, just trying to think of, well, because I guess it's more of the issue with the Planning Commission, but just so, just so I'm clear on if someone proposes a site plan to have a curbside pickup and they, let's just say, they say, I want two spots. So for instance, I just said Wendy's, I don't want to promote Wendy's, but I said Wendy's today, it's the only place I could think of, right, that's in the city itself that has, they literally have two signs that say, don't park here because it's for curbside pickup. So, so who chose, so who chose that they wanted two? Do they say, I want two, and then the Planning Commission reviews their plan and says, okay, you still have enough customer and employee parking to allow two that are just for that? Is that how that works or?
So it doesn't, right now we don't dictate anything on curbside pickup. We don't ask for it.
So we don't need to even do that?
No, I mean, we ask for general parking requirement standards. So they have to meet our general parking requirements, so number of spots. They can use those spots however they best see fit. And I think that kind of goes back to the Planning Commission's comment on that transaction is actually happening a lot faster than if you were going in, you know, in the case of Wendy's dining in and then leaving, this is a much faster transaction. So the impact of that spot being taken is less than if they actually go inside. So in that case, we wouldn't, or we didn't for Wendy's. And actually, Mancino's was another one that was actually brought up in our Planning Commission meeting by someone in the audience and, you know, they have it as well. And another instance where we really don't, haven't gotten involved in, you know, do they have signage or not? Where is it? In the case of a marijuana location, the state is requiring that they submit that and they have to have a plan and an SOP. Their parking lot also has to have cameras, including where this location would be because it would be in a parking space.
And they submit that to the state?
Correct.
Well, that's fine because I'm not necessarily want to over-regulate anyhow, so that's fine. Well, that's fine because I'm not necessarily want to over regulate anyhow. So that's fine. On that topic, I don't know, we discussed that for some amount of significant amount of time. And I'm still where I was before. So I have no issue with allowing both.
And just one quick comment. When we met internally, we did also build into the revised ordinance that that decision may be made by staff. For instance, if, if they had three designated spots in their site plan that was approved by planning commission and they wanted to move to four, is that something that needs to go back to planning commission or can we just have the staff approve that? So we have built in there that staff would approve that. Obviously, that's up to council if you want to do that or if you want to make them go back to the planning commission. But we thought if it's just something like that, if they're going from two to three or three to four, that it doesn't make sense to make them go all through the planning commission process again. That should just be staff decision.
But I guess I was under the impression that we don't regulate that. We, if we say, yeah, you can start your business, whatever that business is, because your parking lot's big enough. We don't necessarily regulate whether they're going to or not. I mean,
We do have some language in there now that that allows it based on what council indicated. It's, it's, you know, where it was moving. And then there's some other language that just says that that will be in their site plan that's approved by planning commission if it's a new license.
Okay.
So we've got some language in there that had has to go in there. But nothing that would conflict with anything that any of the council members have said.
Okay.
But it was just maybe to make it, if there's a slight change, just give staff the authority to do that versus having to go back to the planning commission.
Yeah.
And we do have that ability today as well with any type of site plan review. Some of them might have to go back to planning commission depending on the level of change. Other ones, we can administratively approve, whether it's a lighting change or different things like that, a change to a sign.
Okay. Yeah, that seems completely reasonable to me. I don't want to see all of that.
Neighborhood protection, they just have to place in the back where they have set up for curbside, which is out of the sight of the public, general, outside of the public. It is televised or cameras. It's like this. The newest one out on Chisholm, I don't know what they're going to do even for delivery of product because they do not have a separate area right now built to do that. And so they'd be having the delivery coming in the front door.
They have a loading zone. Yeah, that's their only entry point into the building, other than there's one on the side, but.
Is there a door on the side now?
There is a door on the side, but their loading zone is right in front, basically.
The concern I have there is that the people coming around McDonald's waiting their turn and sit there and see the transactions right there in the center. I'm kind of concerned about that part. It was done that they do not have a, right now, I don't see any fencing going about there. So getting them from McDonald's.
There's landscaping going in in between and it will be six feet tall. The issue was that they couldn't get it in in time in the fall. So they're doing it in the spring. I know this is kind of sidebar and specific to this property, but it is, there will be something there.
And I certainly don't think, I mean, all of that entrance and stuff, that's all kind of state level regulated things. I don't, I don't think we're going to be able to, to say, just based on a lot that someone either buys an existing building or one that's already there, whether they're going to be able to have specifically a back way to get in where a car can park where no one's going to see them. I just don't, I just don't see that that's always going to be possible. It might be nice for certain places if that's how they want to do business, but I don't see that we need to regulate have to be in the back. Is it, they don't have to be?
Back in that case, they're not that building.
Right.
It's just that maybe with the site plans, it's like this. I mean, we're giving a lot to the marijuana shops. It's like this. But I I'm still of the opinion that it shouldn't be totally viewable by all the public. It's like this. That's all I'm looking at. Especially those coming in around, like you said, you grab at least a six-foot fence or something. So that helps.
Yeah. And I understand. I just, I don't want to get back in the weeds. We've discussed this quite, quite a bit, whether an individual that went into the store and comes out with a brown paper bag or if the store owner comes out with a brown paper bag out of that same door, it's just a brown paper bag. And somebody's going to get in and out of a vehicle or they're going to walk up to a window. And I mean, I don't want to make a big thing about it again, but it does, I don't see the necessity of, of bounding them to have to go come out a back way to go to someone's vehicle when it's, when they can just come out whatever door, the whatever door. And I was going to say, Montiel, to your knowledge, there is no regulation on the state level that would bound them to a back door area or anything like that. It's just basically they have to go through certain regulations to be able to provide this at the state level.
Correct. They have to submit a business location plan, which is basically their site plan. It has a lot of other information in it as well. But it is including security information, camera locations, all that kind of stuff all goes together. So that would be included in that location plan that they submit to the state.
Okay.
Montiel, just for clarification. So I think I understood this. When someone submits their site plan, if they want to do curbside or, you know, outdoor delivery, they have to designate a specific number of spots for that?
They don't. No.
Okay. I had that same question.
Does require.
Use between what Bill said and what you said.
The state does require that they have to have a plan for each. So and if they don't submit it originally with their submission, they have to contact them with that submission prior to approval for both.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're all set on that topic.
I am.
Okay. So the next one is micro businesses growers and processors. So the conversation on this one was really, we don't have any right now within the city limits. We haven't received any applications for one yet at this point. However, we wanted to have a conversation about it just so that we're prepared. Our ordinance primarily focused on retail locations, I think, because that was just kind of what was coming faster than everything else. So we just want to make sure we're fully prepared if we were to allow one of these options within the city. So first of all, just a couple notes, I guess, to consider as far as plant number goes. So the state now allows a class A micro business, we kind of talked about this last time, which can grow up to three hundred plants. We allow a micro business. Our current ordinance allows it basically anywhere where the retailer would be allowed. So they could have up to three hundred plants. A class C grower can have up to two thousand plants, not including stacking of licenses. And note, they are currently not required to gain additional approval for stacking of licenses if the, if the facility size does not expand. So as long as they don't have to expand the footprint of their building, they could add on to that license and grow more than two thousand. So I did a comparison to other zoning ordinance uses within our use matrix to see what is a similar type of use. So and just to back up, micro businesses, just to level set, allow growing, processing and selling all within the same location. A grower would be, they're just growing the plants. They're not doing any processing. And then a processor would be basically getting the oils and everything out of the plants. So comparison to the zoning ordinance, agricultural products, processing and storage are allowed by right and I one and I two. So it would be industrial. Wholesale agriculture is allowed by right and B three, I one and I two. Bulk seed, feed, fertilizer and nursery stack outlet and distribution centers, including wholesale, are allowed by right and I one and I two with a special land use in the B three district. Food beverage processing and packaging is allowed by right and I one and I two. And then greenhouses, nurseries, landscaping are allowed by a special land use in the CCD, but only the Washington Ripley corridor. And then also in B two, B three, I one and I two. The greenhouse nursery landscaping also has a supplemental regulation. That bullet, one of the bullet points states, when such uses are located adjacent to residential zones, they shall not operate or be open for business between the hours of eleven PM and seven AM. So I guess the question for me would be, what is our difference there when we say not operate or be open? For a grower or a processor, I mean, especially a grower, there is an operation happening twenty-four seven, whether it be lighting or, you know, anything else going on. So that would be one point of consideration there. We also had an opportunity, I did not visit one of them. Rachel visited a micro business in Anaway. And we all, Rachel and I and the mayor, visited a grower in Harrisville to get a better feel for what, what they're like. So a couple of points of note, especially from the grower in Harrisville that I thought were interesting and something we should take into consideration if, if we do, you know, want to change the ordinance's power source. So there are, and he gave some examples of growers using diesel generators as their primary energy source because their local power company does not have enough excess capacity to support the amount of energy use. And growers consume a lot of energy. It was reported spending thirty-five thousand in one month on diesel and the generators are extremely loud. So one recommendation would potentially be not allowing this type of energy power as the primary energy source and documentation from the power company by the applicant, that there is enough capacity to support that with power company, the local power company use. Another was wastewater. There was a concern that wastewater disposal into municipal water supply could negatively affect the pH, along with the use of fertilizers. They recommended recycling the majority of wastewater, which I think most of them do, but there is still some residual that isn't being used. And they recommended that that should be hauled away, not put back into the wastewater system and also discussing with your local wastewater treatment facility. Odor control is another one. In his opinion, carbon filters were not enough for a grow operation. One of those questions is how can you really measure odor? You know, one odor, an odor from one person might not be something that they mind compared to someone else, or a strong odor to someone might not be as strong to someone else. Our marijuana ordinance states for odors, facilities and establishments may not emit noxious odors or fumes in accordance with the city's zoning ordinance regarding visibility of activities and control of emissions. So our zoning ordinance states under performance standards that the emission of noxious odorous matter in such quantities as to be readily detectable at any point along any lot line, so as to produce a public nuisance or hazard, is prohibited. And then we also say for new facilities, commercial or industrial, the most recent technologies shall be utilized to reduce odor as part of or in addition to any conditions included in air-water quality permits. As part of the zoning permit review, the applicant shall demonstrate that all measures technologically available and financially viable to mitigate the emission of noxious odors will be incorporated into the design of the facility. One interesting thing is that Eagle does have requirements and is have, is getting more involved with marijuana businesses and air quality. But the interesting thing for this is that they don't require a permit for growers. So at this time, this is on their website, processors are the only type of marijuana facility that may need an air use permit. And that would be the only type of facility that they would regulate from an air quality control standpoint. So it states otherwise nuisance odor complaints about marijuana facilities will be handled by local units of government. So then again, you get back to, okay, well, now what do we do? How do we measure that? How do we have some type of quantifiable information on if this is offensive or not? So it becomes hard to enforce. I think the, the grower that we visited was really very, they ran a really tight ship. It was quite impressive, actually. But the micro business that Rachel visited was a much different experience. And I think you mentioned the odor was quite.
You could smell it down the road a bit. So, you know, you don't know what you're going to get.
Right.
So our ordinance, I guess, let's, let's pick off a couple of things at a time. I didn't mean to interrupt you if you weren't done.
No, go ahead.
Like really far before we can kind of. So let's work backwards, I guess, just quickly with, with the nuisance, with the, with this odor. Read that in our odor nuisance ordinance, which is separate, that's goes for everybody. Or was it in, I don't know. I'm sorry. I got lost in which part you were reading. But you read, you read something in there that, that said that, that they have to use the most, the most up to date or the most. What was the wording again? Read that part.
Logically available and financially viable to mitigate the emission of noxious odors.
No, go for that.
Exactly. Because we've run into that. It's not financially viable on other occasions.
We're just going to let all the odor go.
Yeah. So I just wanted you to kind of, yeah, reiterate that part because almost whatever that says is it's nice, but but the part about, so the, the part about the, about the nuisance. So, so the state, and it's just as well with me that the state is pushing that off to us because we've kind of seen, and I don't want to get too deep into it, but we've kind of seen how the state handles odor issues. That they are, that they are, that they do control. But that doesn't mean that we can't really just kind of go off of what they do. So we know what they do. They have a trained specialist that smells things. And they just find this source and then they just keep going out from it, however far. And they say, okay, I'm three blocks away and it's annoying me. That person, it's annoying them. And they've obviously gotten complaints from the neighborhood as well. So, so that person is the end all. And that person says, let's just say it's me. It's probably not going to be because I can't. But if it's me, then I'm going to, I'm going to come back to the city and I'm going to say, yep, they're, they have violated your ordinance. And, and we're going to write them the same thing as the state writes. It's a, it says, you have twenty-four days to answer to this. I don't see how we wouldn't be able to facilitate kind of the same thing, but on a local level and just say, okay, if our residential areas, and we'll talk about that, where that's going to be. Because it's going to be a resident, another business probably, I mean, another industry isn't going to complain more than likely. So, so if it gets to a residential area, then we send our person over there and they smell. And if, yeah, it's, if it lasts longer than it's supposed to last and it's as stronger than it's supposed to be, then we write, then we write something up. Does that seem plausible?
Well, I mean, I think our ordinance right now says, this is the zoning ordinance, says that it can't be readily, readily detectable at any point along any lot line so as to produce a public nuisance or hazard. So I would say if you can smell something at that point, that, that you could potentially enforce something. It would just be a matter of what do you enforce? How long do you take for them to correct it? I don't know specifically what the state requires from an odor perspective, but like they allow growers to be outdoors. So they're probably a little more flexible, maybe, odor, as opposed to maybe a little.
I just mean industry, not necessarily marijuana, but any industry that. Because I think that's a little bit lot line. And we can maybe get into it a little bit as we go, but, and it's fine. I just, I just think lot line is maybe a little bit too specific because if they're out on Commerce Drive and there's nothing but woods all the way around them and somebody walks by and start and complains, it's a lot line. There's literally nothing out there except for the propane dealer. I'm just using that spot because I know of that spot. So I mean, and behind them is the railroad tracks and behind that is the farge. So if we're going to say lot line, we can leave that in there, I suppose, but.
I think the challenge is, you know, it depends then on who is your neighbor. Do you enforce based on just a complaint and because the neighbor cares or not? Or is it a level of?
In town, that's a micro business and that's close enough to residential that it could be a problem.
Well, and that's the, that's what we're going to get into most immediately as well. So as far as as far as pushing that industry out of the city. Well, in the city, but out of the dwelling residential part of the city.
Because really for micro businesses, if you look at the other use, uses in the use matrix, all of those are pretty much I one and I two, except for a few that are in B two and B three. And those are pretty low from an impact standpoint. Growers, where you're growing is typically out.
Growing and processing.
And processing specifically, yeah, food, beverage. Food, beverage, processing and packaging only in I-1 and I-2, which a processor definitely would be doing. And a micro business would be doing.
But, and I'm just, Cindy has it up, so I'm just looking at it. It's okay, I could see. So if we push, if we do an overlay, if that's the right term.
It's an option.
If we opt for an overlay just to kind of get this out. So if we get it out of the residential area of the city and we say, okay, we're going to continue to allow micro business, processors and growers. But not anywhere near any I industrial that's near a residential zone. There's still plenty. There's still Commerce Drive area, still the US-23 property. There's still quite a few that those businesses could go. And I don't know if it's, I don't know what's realistic as far as whether you say 1,000 feet from a residence and that's where it becomes an overlay if I'm right. Because if you just say the industrial areas, some of those industrial areas butt right up to residential area. So if you do an overlay or a buffer, whichever you decide. That's what I'm proposing, that we still allow that type of business, but well away from anybody that's more than likely going to be irritated by it. And whether that's 1,000 feet or 1,500 feet, I don't really know. I would probably leave that maybe more to the planning commissioner or somebody to develop that area, that buffer from. Or while you experienced maybe one of the worser ones that we might encounter.
And I was told that when they are harvesting, the smell is much worse. And then you can smell it all the way out to the road, which was probably, you know, two football fields away. I mean, I have to measure it, but, you know, so I don't know what the right answer is for that. But at a minimum, yeah, I think you want to keep them in the industrial with at least 1,000 feet. I don't know, maybe we can play around with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, from a residential zone, residential area. Not 1,000 feet from anybody. That's fine with me. I'd be open to taking a look at the map with something like that and seeing what that. Because then you're having, then you're going to reduce the amount of issues and complaints that you're going to have inherently. Because unless the wind blows right towards town and on that one specific day or something like that.
And right now, a micro business is in all the business districts. And, you know, I think that would be not a good thing.
Probably not. And I don't want to get rid of them altogether. Somebody asked me the other day, well, why is micro business even a thing? Micro business is a thing to make sure, in my impression and from what I've read, is that the state kind of allowed that so that these huge corporations weren't the only ones that were able to get into the industry. So somebody on a smaller scale can get into the industry and do this on a smaller scale. And so if we don't allow the micro business somewhere off, we're kind of saying, okay, well, we only want the big ones to be able to do this type of thing. Or not do it in the city.
And a micro business, as you defined for us earlier, they grow, they process, they distribute.
And so.
So in my mind, what you described with that, the growing and the processing part of that should trump the distribution. And I would probably put them out in an industrial area and take them fully out of the business area. I mean, you know, just because it's just like, you know, that odor is pretty strong. I mean, there's a processing plant that is on I-75 that I had the pleasure of passing by. And it's pretty strong. And working in the conveyor business, there is that. And those guys will tell you that when the harvest is happening, that is when it is the strongest. Right, so I think, you know, if we're going to buffer anything in the growing operations and stuff, the micro business, because they are growing, they are processing. Yeah, I honestly think that, you know, they should be regulated. If we're going to allow at all, don't plan on voting for that. But it's neither here nor there. At least you know where I'm at. That the, you know, would be at least in that area. Would ask council to consider that.
If you want to head in that direction, your, I guess, I mean, I'm not running the ship here, but. And the other thing was your point on the diesels. That was something that they did bring up before. And I would certainly agree with that. I don't, probably for anything. It should almost be, I mean, I know we're talking about, this is a work group for marijuana, but really that should be kind of a citywide thing, no matter what you're doing, that you can't just fire up. I don't know if that's.
I think that was in the more rural areas that that was happening. But I guess it's certainly a possibility. I don't think that that would ever be cheaper, the cheaper option.
Yeah, but I would just want to make sure that it's not an option in case somebody's got some deal on diesel fuel. Assuming it would be, it would probably fall under our noise ordinance anyhow. But maybe just specifically saying that they can't might be a good idea.
So just to be clear, as far as the, well, the micro businesses would come, would, well, you would treat micro businesses, growers and processors the same. And you want us to look at specific parcels within the industrial districts that would potentially, there wouldn't be a conflict with a 1,000 foot buffer from residential.
I think so, yeah, I agree. We agreed on something on that.
I'm sorry, just one more thing. So Montiel, do you think that could go to the planning commission for vetting? Or to see, I mean, we might have to go do some field work.
Some map updates I'm looking at, Steve. Possibly, yeah.
Because that's still, because that's, just so I'm clear, what part of all this process is planning commission?
So anything from a district. If it's allowed in certain districts, they're kind of overseeing that. The 1,000 foot buffers is in the zoning.
Okay.
That would be.
Okay.
We would, once we determine that though, we would want to write it into the ordinance because we do have other buffers outlined in there. But then, yeah, the zoning would have to go with it. So, I mean, that's something we would probably have to bring back to the next council meeting though, just to.
Okay.
I could probably give them scenarios anyway for next, because our next meeting is on Tuesday of next week. So probably at least give.
Fit that in. There was one more thing. I can't remember what it was. I was just going to say, it's planning commission related. That's okay, it'll come back later. Was that pretty much everything on the three grow? Grow and process opportunities? Oh, that's what I was going to say. Okay, so this is going to take a little bit to get this through. If there's any potential, I guess whatsoever, with someone presenting something to the planning commission or in the meantime, is there really any, is there a window here where we should put a temporary moratorium on processing and growing in the city until this is worked out? In case this takes you like a month or something? Is that going to be an issue? Or would you just say, yeah, we're still, because our ordinance is written already?
Technically, they could submit an application as long as it's within 30 days of a planning commission meeting. They could apply for that special land use.
Okay.
We couldn't stop that right now. So if you want to do that.
So if someone applied tomorrow, they would fall under the current guideline, period? All right, I was just throwing that out there. It's highly unlikely.
Yeah.
Never say never though.
Right.
I mean, so I don't know, Bill, what's your direction on that?
I have received a couple inquiries just about marijuana in general just last week, not specific to growers, but just asking questions, so.
Yeah, I don't think we can do anything about it currently.
Okay.
Somebody walked in tomorrow and applied for one, would have to consider it under the current ordinance.
All right. Tomorrow's a national holiday. So there is a bit of a concern on time. If you could explain that to the planning commission and the work.
One more thing about the micro businesses. So Montiel, you noted that the state recently changed from 150 and they're going to allow 300. So I think that has to be changed in our ordinance. Or we say per state law or something like that.
Did we just say per state law?
We should correct.
It might be easier. This is continuously developing. Probably almost anything that's governed by the state, we could just say per state law.
We don't have to go back and amend it if they change it to 400.
Yeah, okay. So that covers that.
Yep, so protection from residential, next. So we did receive a request, and that was reviewed last time we met, to look at limiting the distance between facilities to not closer than 500 feet of each other. That was also discussed with the planning commission. And they did express concerns regarding these uses adjacent to residential neighborhoods and whether it's the concentration or separation from residential that should be looked at. I would say they were definitely in favor of looking at some option to protect residential neighborhoods. So our ordinance states right now, this is the municipal ordinance, to protect public health and safety through reasonable limitations on marijuana operations as they relate to noise, air and water quality, neighborhood and patient customer safety, security for the facility and its personnel, and other health and safety concerns. It also says to protect residential neighborhoods by limiting the location and the concentration of types of medical marijuana facilities and adult use marijuana establishments to specific areas of the city. So there were several different map considerations that we looked at. The first one was a 250 foot buffer from residential. However, just based on how the city was laid out, there really is, it eliminates almost every location because we have so much residential next to commercial. Another option was looking at locations not adjacent to residential. And that map was provided to you to look at by Steve. There were two options, that was one of them. That option, it does open up more options, but it is still limiting. And one of the negative things, in my opinion, about that option is that it really forces the majority of the locations to be in that Washington Ripley corridor. So you're forcing all of those to be in one area of the city, which is.
500 foot, yeah.
And that's just not even considering 500 foot. It's just, you know, it can't be adjacent to residential. So it's really kind of making everything go into that corridor. So you don't have any separation simply because of that. We also provided a map. It would be allowed in the current district. So here we're talking about primarily the retail locations. So current districts plus a 500 foot distance separation. A city block is about 450-ish feet, just to kind of give you an idea of what that would look like. So you could envision, you know, maybe one could be every other block or almost every other block. And then Steve laid out where those potentially could be. So we can't say exactly, you know, it could be here, here and here. But we could, gave you an idea to say, one, based on where, there are three currently. So based on where those are, what then could be kind of around that? And looked at it that way. So it could be one or two could be here, one could be here, one could be there. Two to three could be over here. So it gives enough distance, but also spreads it out enough that you're not forcing everything into one area. Because right now, the ordinance is wide open. So you could have several locations right next to each other in theory if they, you know, wanted to be, which may not necessarily be great for a neighborhood that's right next to that.
Do we have any other current applications in right now of specific interest other than the three?
I do, I have one that has been pending for quite some time. They're looking at a location on Chisholm.
They don't have, they're not, they haven't finalized.
They're not through the process, yep. They haven't gone to planning commission yet.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't something already in.
Nope. So that one to me seemed like the better option. We could also look at overlay zones. This is something like what Traverse City did. They specifically picked some properties. I did some research on their website. And some of the reasons that they gave, one of them was interesting. So they eliminated parcels that only had eligible areas within the setbacks, unbuildable slivers of land, common areas for site condos, single tenant buildings, environmentally sensitive locations, and publicly owned properties were removed. One thing that they noted, because they have basically sub areas, this is just within the city of Traverse City. And they noted one concern that was taken into consideration is the congregation of medical marijuana provisioning centers, which they currently allow. Due there being no buffer between establishments, this has resulted in some portions of the city being oversaturated while others are underserved. So that was one of the reasons that they chose to do sub areas and then pick specific properties within that. And then they also had some comments on their downtown development authority and limiting it there as well. But I just thought that was an interesting point to note on how they kind of went about it.
Yeah, I don't want to get into that.
Yeah.
Free road.
Yeah.
They virtueism and it just doesn't. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, but I thought the comment on kind of separating them geographically was an interesting point.
Yeah, and I'm, so it's, did you have more?
Nope.
Okay. Guess I'll start it off again. I don't have an issue with buffering between the businesses. I did at first. I didn't really want to get into that before when we first started developing this. But over time and kind of seeing where they are now, I don't really have too much of an issue with that. And because we talked, talked to a few other people as far as what that does. And I don't want to have a whole block because it bothers people. It doesn't bother some people and it bothers other people. But so I'm not opposed to the suggested 500 feet between retailers. It doesn't seem like too much of an issue. I don't know where you guys are at with that. But I would support that if there's enough support on council for that. The separation from residential, I've already spoke on that. I've already spoken on that enough, I guess, for my opinion. It's a commercial retail zone, it's a commercial retail zone. We start buffering any amount of space between residences. We've seen what we're kind of down to. And I don't want to push them all into one area. And I don't want to push them all into one area and then support 500 foot buffers between them at the same time. So it's a city and it's a legal retail. So I don't see buffering them from the residential area at all with any more than we would any other business with a privacy fence or whatever the requirements are for any business. But I will support the buffer between the separate businesses if that's something you guys want to go with. That's where I'm at.
That would lower the concentration per neighborhood as well, wouldn't it?
To a certain extent, sure, yeah. Per block and per neighborhood. So while, for instance, like you had said, if there's, there's already one on Chisholm and 9th, 10th, next to McDonald's.
Yeah.
So there wouldn't be able to theoretically be one on either block, on either side of them. So there would be a block and then another. So the concentration would be less, not only in that area, but from the residences as well. You wouldn't have a whole block full of them or.
Let's clarify with Montiel. So what does that mean for the zoning? And I mean, obviously, that's something that you would have to change the maps or would you keep an internal map?
Well, right now, we publish the maps. So I think we would identify those white areas. And then it would be up to us, once we receive an application, to know where the current ones are and then do the measuring.
Yeah, I think create a master map and you could even lay it and use, you know, dry erase markers on it, a compass that, you know, is exactly 500 feet. I think it's important though to be clear that 500 feet wouldn't be to the center, it would be to the property line.
Right.
I think you've got to be careful with that kind of language.
So it could be just, I mean, it's a little bit of maintenance for you.
Mm-hmm, but doable, definitely.
Yeah, and then obviously to clarify, whatever's easiest, whether it's 500 feet from the center of the.
Right now we have it that, in it that it's the property line, so we do state that today.
500 feet from the property line?
Just that, so like we have a 1,000-foot buffer right now and a 250-foot buffer right now. That is measured property line to property line today.
So choose the lineup of the same buffer very heavily placed.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
And the state measures their 1,000 feet to schools from property line to property line as well, so it's consistent with that.
So you're basically taking a circle and moving it around the property.
Creating a parcel buffer of 500 feet.
Right, but from each, from pretty much every point, corners and flats, I suppose. As long as it, well, it's been reasonable for schools and everything else we've.
Run into as well as it's geographic center of the property or is it the center of the building that's on the property and the building is off to the side?
So let's just, let's just use the same one. In, in the event that we pass this, I guess, just use the same theory we've used for everything else.
I mean, that's, that's the, that's what we use for any kind of notification process. For, you know, somebody's changing zoning, it's a 500-foot radius and it's around those outside parcel lines each way. The center of the parcel.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just another one on that note. Okay, so, so let's say, let's say somebody comes in with a property that they've, you know, put an offer in on or whatever because they got their tape out, though then they, you know, and then they come to the city, which they probably should have first. But they haven't done anything. But let's just say they come to the city and from property line to property line is 500 feet, nine and a half inches. So does a 500-foot, does that give you latitude for anything? Or do you, if, if we're talking about inches, because it could very well happen. If we're talking about inches, does, is there a, or somewhere around a footer or whatever, is there any latitude in that? Or do you guys kind of determine whether this is the intent of what we're saying with the 500 feet or is it 500 feet and that's done or?
I think it's more of an intent thing, I would think. You know, do you get surveyors involved and say, this is where your property point is, this is where this property line is?
Right. So it's the, it's the intent of 500 feet and then if it's an issue, you would obviously come.
We may have to write something into that effect. I don't know if you would recommend that or not, but, I mean, the ordinance will say 500.
The general rule on everything is make an exception if you want. It's hard to not. And then somebody says, well, I'm 498 feet. And the next guy says, well, I mean, I know we're limited by how many we're gonna have anyways, so we're not gonna have 1,000 of them.
Yeah, we're supposed to only have two.
You know, 498, then the next person that says, well, mine's only 492, and then mine's only 448. It's not that big a difference and.
Yeah.
So.
I'd rather have it.
I guess on the other side of that, I, I held a driveway curb cut for four and a half years while it went through court. And they tried to prove who owned what section of what lot and then we determined where the driveway could go. That, that happened.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I was just asking a question, just.
Hey, Montiel. If they're, to the mayor's point and what everybody's explaining, if somebody is that close within a couple of feet, regardless of who measures, they would, I'm sure, have an option to go to the zoning board of appeals and ask for a variance on the distance, because they just did that in Alpena Township with the proximity of one to a future child daycare center, where they have a buffer there and it was 50 feet close or 100 or something like that. So that, that outfit went to the zoning board of appeals and we're granted a variance on it. Is that the case in this as well? I mean, it's a setback, right?
So they have an avenue?
Possibly.
Possibly.
I was gonna say, because any, any other ordinance for any other business, they would have that option.
Correct.
We can't lock in something to this ordinance and say, well, for this ordinance, it always has to, they have no right to appeal.
I think for this one, the difference is that a zoning board of appeals variance would be, this is my property and I want to encroach on my property in a different way. Like I want to be closer to my own lot line as opposed to it's a proximity to something else. It's, you're looking at your property versus, you know, a comparison to someone else's that's, so that would be a little bit different, I think.
Yeah, you may, you may be correct.
And normal appeals, like if we were to deny an application for some reason, those appeals have to go through the court system in our current ordinance, not the ZBA. So that's why I'm a little cautious to answer on the ZBA portion, because I don't know if that would be an option. I think they would have to go through the court system. I might have to look into that a little.
We'll just, we'll cross it, we'll get there, whether there's an appeal process or not.
For instance, if something like that happened in our case, if the map offset and it was, you know, 497, the engineering department would go, oh, we'd find each property corner and we would physically measure between them. And that would be our final say, I guess. We would say, this is what exists in the field for us. If we can point to attain measure and if that satisfies the property owner, then great. If it doesn't satisfy them, they can chase it further and get a surveyor.
Okay.
I think, I think that's what, that what the next logical step would be if they really want to argue it that much.
Yeah, okay. Good to know.
Thank you.
Okay. So, so the next, so that kind of fulfills the, the work session. Kind of got you guys know. So the next step is planning commission Tuesday and then back here, next meeting.
We could do, so there's nothing that says that we can't do an additional reading on this if we need to. But Bill, I mean, we do have enough for the second reading and then of course we have to determine, you know, what the industrial buffers look like for processors and growers and micro businesses.
Okay.
So we might need an additional reading because of that, but we'll see what we can come back with, mostly complete at the next meeting.
Okay. Excellent. All right, that closes that. So next up is new business that we added and this is the MEDC, EDC grant.
Okay, so this grant agreement is with MEDC and it is an appropriations that came through the state last year. And it is for the water protect, excuse me, the water production plant. And it is for the replacement of the two clear wells, which, Steve, what's the total project cost for that? This is pretty close to, to the whole project cost. Okay, yeah. So we finally got the grant agreement and it is dated October 1st, 2022, so I think it's coming a little bit late. So that would go through 2024 and we would be on track to, to get that completed. So this is the grant agreement and I would just need a motion for me to be able to sign this.
And this one has a, has a match or doesn't, it's not?
It's a $6 million appropriation. Yep.
I have no questions, Mr. Mayor.
Just before we do, I guess, what's, what's the next step in this process? What do we?
It, it looks like we would receive a 50%.
Oh, yeah, I saw that part.
First, okay.
From our perspective, once we've, everything's.
I mean, this is, this is kind of what we've been waiting for. And once we get this, we've got the specs already written for design, a part of it. So we're gonna, we would bid that out for them.
So you bid out a designer? So you still have to, we still have to do the design part formally? And then, and then the construction part?
The reason being is it's forecast and almost a million dollars for design. I don't think it's gonna be that much, but we did, the design, or we do that we actually have the money.
Okay.
And realistically, what would the timeframe for construction be on this?
I think they said almost a year for design, a few months for design. So we got him kicked off right away, you know, maybe, maybe next spring you could break ground. And there's a year for construction too.
Yeah, so. Right, and so that puts us pretty close to their December 31st, so we have to keep this moving along.
And can we get an extension if we need?
That I don't know. You know, that's something that we could certainly ask, but they are, oh, five months late in getting us the agreement.
Here's your money.
But we, you know, we're okay with.
This one has been on the CIP for a long.
They say right now, what they worried about before was the shipment actually getting the test.
Yep.
Okay, beautiful. Oh, you didn't move already?
No, I did not move yet. I am, I'm very happy. I move, we approve and, and adjourn to sign on our behalf.
Second.
Councilman Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell? Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchak?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Thank you.
I move we adjourn to closed session to discuss an update on water and sewer litigation.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchak?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Proctor Johnson?
For our online viewers, we won't be taking any action when we come back to open session. We will just be adjourned.
Can I just ask a question? When could we get that back in the land law statute? Create in that high water part and they had top of the headwaters.